All this meeting to order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
On fair say aye.
Aye.
Oh, some motion carry, open forum. Anybody would like to speak? All right, consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills and purchase orders. There is one that we're pulling out from Stearns County, one of the bills for paving. Approval of the investments in EMT hire and a resolution number 2023-12 gambling resolution as for Lisa Fiddler Foundation for Families. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
On fair say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. We're on to a presentation from the Bernix family. Jason Bernix is here from the Bernix Family Foundation is giving Melrose a check for $50,000 to put towards our parks, Aqua River Park, and we have a couple of members here. Would you like to talk about your foundation a little bit?
Sure, I just have a couple of words, you know, nothing too much to say, but it's an honor to be able to represent the family and company for giving back to the communities and sees communities like Melrose that supports us and giving back to the community really makes it for a win-win because we're giving back to keep your community strong and that really is for everybody. So the long history of Bernix, we started in 1916 and we've always been community minded. We were a lot smaller back in 1916, so we were able to give a little bit more back. So this is a little bit more sizable than when we were doing back in the old days. So just wanted to thank you for submitting and the request for the grant and really appreciate the project and what you're doing for the future people of our communities that we're going to be serving.
Yeah, and we really do appreciate it. It's going to, you know, our small cities aren't made of money, so it's nice that, you know, corporation goes out of their way to, you know, support us. I mean, it's very beneficial and help legacy future generations in our park and we thank you very much and we have a few people from the park who are here and we'd love to get a couple of pictures with you.
That'd be perfect.
All right, and we just want to say thank you for it, we appreciate it.
Yes.
They should be the ones doing this.
Can you guys all hold the sign please? There's always one smarty in there.
Thank you for straightening that out.
Yeah, Sheila's got it. Thank you, perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks much. Thank you. You bet. And the real check will be coming like next week, so play around with that one.
Jason, I appreciate it very much, thank you for helping.
Thanks for inviting me to the meeting.
You bet.
All right, enjoy it, thank you.
Okay, we are on to reports. Police Department monthly report, Chief.
Good evening, our monthly report for January 2023 in our traffic area, we had 23 citations, 42 verbal warnings, 15 written warnings, 253 recalls, calls or requests for services here, last year is 299, so we're down by 46 starting a year out. 30 agency assists for this month, pretty average on that area. Other than that, I don't have much more to report.
Nice.
Questions?
Okay, thanks Chief. City Attorney report, Scott.
Yeah, just a few items in my report. Spent some time working on some potential development items. Granite City project is moving along. You've got an agreement under Old Business that will go through, have some interest possibly out in the industrial park and looking at that. Worked with the city planner to try to sort through the subdivision ordinance on a possible sale here in town and then we're continuing to work through the wastewater charges and questions regarding those. So that's what I've got. If you've got some questions, otherwise we'll keep rolling.
Thank you, Scott. City Planner report?
Good evening, regarding Riverside Flats next door, we're now in the appeal stage, so the findings of fact and resolution that you passed at the last meeting is being published. So we just need to wait a little while on that. We're waiting for structural engineering and permits. Quick trip, we've received the first permit application from a subcontractor, the sign company came first. We've been working with the environmental team, they've completed their environmental testing on the structure, they have abatement planned coming up here. They have been working with myself and Fire Chief Booty, they have granted permission for our fire department to go in and do training prior to demolition, which is really nice and Tom, I think, just said that they're going to be working with Freeport as well that night, so that'll be happening. Railroad West, working on cost projections for the road. Good news regarding grants, Roger is here tonight also. We discussed a concept paper that we submitted to the Department of Energy for a dedicated tie line between the substations and the overhead circuits. We were invited in advance to a full application. It's a national grant, so it was, we're very happy to be invited to proceed. We're going to be working with DGR on the technical aspects and finishing that grant. It is due the first week of April. These are projects that are already in our capital improvement plan. We would just be able to get alternative funding, which is always good. Regarding the park and the restrooms, we are working with the DNR and some floodplain regulations and other than that, we're anticipating a very busy summer with building projects.
Thank you, Sheila. City Engineer report, Mr. Blomo.
All right, good evening, nothing that hasn't been brought up already in my previous reports here, 2023 street project, we're almost wrapped that guy up, we'll see that at the March meeting for you guys' approval and authorization to bid. Been working with Sheila and the team on Railroad West, especially the financing and estimating on that guy and on the industrial park, trying to get that sale completed, working with Mindout a little bit on my end, so other than that, keeping plenty busy with things in Melrose. That's it for me.
All right, thank you very much. City Administrator report?
So just to tag along with what Sheila and Dave said about the Railroad West project, you guys will be receiving email tomorrow, so if you can look for that, please, and that's going to be the cost scenarios that we will be discussing at our work session next week. So look for that tomorrow if you could, please. Just to give you a brief legislative update, they are trying to get a bonding bill passed and there's two different proposals out there for the bonding bill. One would have a typical kind of traditional capital item bonding bill, which would be $1.5 billion, that's primarily water, wastewater projects, college and universities, flood mitigation, et cetera, roads, bridges. The other that they're looking at is just a small, much smaller one, and that's $392 million and that one would really just cover projects that not necessarily would be able to get bonded. The problem with that one is they, their proposal is to use the cash reserves for that versus going out for bonding. So I don't know if their thoughts are because of the interest rates or where they're at, but anyway, that's kind of what's happening down there. It does, the bill, the original bill does address many of the priorities for Greater Minnesota, including 87 million for water infrastructure, 41 million for public facilities authority, 80 million for point source implementation grants, which is infiltration. There's 10 million for lead sign service replacement class, which would be very, very beneficial for us. The Greater Minnesota Development Public Infrastructure, which is a BDPI, which is a traditional program they typically have, they're looking to put 10 million into that fund. Another one that is new, and if it passes, well, there'll be $3 million towards Greater Minnesota Housing Program, which would include some infrastructure that could be used for getting roads, et cetera, out to affordable or to housing projects. The Minnesota Child Care Facilities, they're looking at about 900,000 and for local bridges and roads, they're about 146 million. There also is, they haven't done anything yet with local government aid, but we are continually pursuing that that actual appropriation is fully funded and actually meets the requirements of having a cost of living adjustment with it, so that it is a realistic number for what cities need to fund their future projects. So that's kind of what we're keeping track of. If anybody has any questions relative to the legislature or want to know anything about any of the bills, feel free to call me or there is a signup sheet that you can get on that will tell you this as well. So that is all I have for now, I have a couple other things on the regular agenda.
We are on to action items, A is Apogee, it's part of the apathy, so it's part of the 2023 budget for a redesign of our website?
Yep. So our website has not been updated since 2011. We had an internal staff committee consisting of Stacy Funk, Stephanie Perez and myself and we looked at three proposals for website redesign. After review and demonstrations of the companies and a discussion with the rest of the admin staff, we would like to bring forth a proposal from Apogee as a recommended website design company. It's actually much more than a website design, it's an actual multi-use platform that covers website, custom mobile application and a notification system. Apogee started out working with school districts and now works with local units of government. We checked their city references and the consistent comments that we received are that Apogee is outstanding to work with and their customer service is excellent. The administrative side is very user friendly and it is an integrated platform in real time. I believe in your packet there was their, a copy of their proposal. The overall cost this year would be $12,700, that would be split between the city and the PUC. This is $1,500 over the budget for what we had for design and license, so it respectively is $750 for each entity, so 750 for the PUC, 750 for the council over what you, above what you would have budgeted this year for that. Now that's just a website redesign and the license for this year, or the license will be obviously prorated for whenever it was up and running and then the ongoing license would be at a cost of 6,200 per year or 3,100 for each of the entities, the PUC and the council. Councilmember Clausen did send an email and Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to read that email, it should be in your packet, so.
Yeah, so Tony just had some concerns about, does the city really need a City Melrose app, pushing notifications, so those were just a few things that Tony was wondering about, he just felt that he wasn't educated enough on it, that he wanted to do a little more research. Then at the end it just says, I would like to see the selection of a new website provider table for a month for a little more information gathering. Our website function's good and it's fast today, so we should be able to wait for one month. That just sort of sums it up with what Councilmember Clausen was talking about. And so I think that he did stop in and visit a little bit with Stacy and I did not visit with Stacy on it at all.
I did talk to Stacy on it. We're technically, we're good up till July with our website we have now before we actually have to pay for the extra license fee. But she was also concerned that by the end of February, our discount, we get a discount this time around, a $3,000 discount if we do it by February 28th. But I don't know, I guess I have kind of the same concerns as Tony, like, I don't know, I mean, the app seems new, so we don't really know, would we use it or not? There's probably things in it that we might, but I guess I don't, I mean, should we be more researching a little bit before we just jump to the first, I mean, I know you guys checked out three different ones, but it sounds like they were not real apples-to-apples comparisons either.
No, and that's what's hard, you can't really, they, all three of them had sort of different scenarios, you can't, there's really no one. You know, with this, there's the customer support side and the backside where our administration team would need to do, it's easier for them. The one thing I do want to just let you know as far as our website goes, we currently, again, it hasn't been updated since 2011 and it is not ADA compliant, so we do have to get it updated regardless of what we do and we, you know, again, budgeted for the...
What do they have to have for ADA compliance?
You know, and you're going to ask for that, no, yeah. It's a way of being able to read the website, it's, so you have to be able to have it read by folks that have disabilities, so I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but I just know ours is not compliant, so. I think that, you know, one of the things we had talked about, and actually Travis was part of our roundtable discussion that we had with the admin staff on Monday, and as part of the city image, I think it's important to provide as many ways to communicate with the public as possible. The nice thing about this being app-based is it's then very accessible on multiple different devices and it's real time, so it's that one source of the truth, you know, we're not going to, you know, you have people doing whatever they do out on social media, but this is, we posted, it goes to all of our platforms, so it's real time, so we can tell people the electricity is out on Third Street or something and the power is out, we assume that it'll be back on in two hours. Their snowplows are out, they started at whatever time in the morning, this is what they're going to be doing today, here's the routes they're going to be running. Again, not everybody has this and I totally respect that because I'm sure there are people that won't use it, you know. We also talked about in that same meeting of bringing the newsletter back, which is something that we had done for many, many years and it hasn't been done, I don't think, for probably what, five or more, I'm looking to Patty, I think it's been a while, but that's something that we also talked about, you know, when it comes to getting the word out about Melrose and to the, to the public. So kind of, sort of trying to hit it at all with all kind of areas so that we kind of meet folks where they're at, I guess, is kind of just what we're thinking. So just to give you a little bit more information, so you have that in front of you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with going this road, I just, if we want to do a little more research, I mean, I guess it could come at a cost and it costs us more, but...
I like the idea of redoing it as well, but I'd be in favor of tabling it and looking, looking into just more of the details of what it all does and what we need it to do. But that's just, I don't know enough about reading it out of this paragraph.
Right, it's just, it's such a huge jump from...
What we have.
What we're paying now, I know it's more, but is there more out there from other places that are very comparable?
Yeah, this is pretty unique.
I like the idea of getting an app out there, I'm sure it's going to take time before people would actually start using it, but, I mean...
Do you think you can, I guess I'm more interested about this ADA compliance, what does it do, does it, you know?
Yep.
Is there any other things that you want information on that at least, well, you can do that research on it?
Right, yeah, I would say the ADA is probably the...
Big one?
Big one, for sure. I mean, we don't know how many people use the app, but that and just comparing, I guess, prices, if there's any other ones out there that have app base.
Is there any way to put it out on, just out to the public, see how many people actually use our website?
I think we have actually, I could check with stuff because I do think we can use Google Analytics to see. I think, I don't know if people use our website, I know they go to our Facebook page a lot and I think part of the reason they don't use our website is because it's still outdated in terms of what we have.
Can you see if people can put some information on Facebook, you know, step foot something on Facebook about people's feeling, I don't know, is that stuff that Tony would like?
Or check the Facebook analytics stuff too, because some of this, some of this seems like it'd be repetitive to Facebook, like if we already say the snowplows are out on Facebook, would it be repeating that message on the app?
Well, we know that the younger generation doesn't use Facebook anymore, that's what it like for us old people, which might be something that they use, but...
And it'd just be, I agree, it's just another source, so I'm not against it, I'm just curious like what the...
Yeah, I think, I certainly think that we can do more, I will say this is pretty unique, I don't know as you're going to find an apples-to-apples comparison because I don't think there is something that kind of has all these platforms. The school district does use this, they've used it for quite a while and as far as I know, from what I've heard, it's, I don't know, you guys, if you have young kids, you probably have the app on your phone, so.
I don't have kids in the school.
Yeah, so I don't know, if you use the Apogee app at the school, it works pretty well.
I might use it pretty religiously, but...
Yep.
I got enough on my phone.
So certainly we can.
So yeah, why don't we look at that one, so I think there's three people here that...
I mean, I know Stacy, I actually had her email that company saying, hey, could we, you know, do a little bit more research on it and then still get the discount? They said no, but I don't know, if you're, like, well, I'll take it or leave it in a month, there might still be a chance that they'll give us that.
Yeah, we'll see, I think that maybe what we could do is set up a demonstration and you guys, if you want, with this particular company, we could do it over like a Teams or whatever and then you guys wouldn't have to be together, you could just do it on your own, they can send you something. I think we can do that and then you can each look to see what it is that you find interesting about it. And then as far as the other ones go, the biggest issue, the one was going to be very comparable in terms of a license, so it's, it was actually $4,000, so we can certainly look at that in more detail, absolutely, no problem.
All right, so then we'll just table it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on museum renovation on behalf of the Historical Society, I actually did visit with Roger there, so what they're doing is sort of a minimal opening of a wall just for more in the entrance there. I didn't see one bit of problem and I know Steve has been in the building industry for many generations, so I, I seen everything, looks good for me, have you, any of you guys have any concerns on that?
I stopped on and I looked at it, I'm, I'm fine with it, actually.
I think it'll do, I think it'll be a great asset, yeah, be great, so I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion is carried. Temporary summer seasonal worker?
Historically, the city has hired a part-time seasonal worker to assist with the summer workload. Streets and Parks Supervisor Gary Mirtendorf is again requesting the approval to hire a temporary summer seasonal worker on an as needed basis. This was approved by the PUC at their meeting on Monday night because it is a position that's shared, so, I mean, it's in Gary's department, but once in a while they have to go, I think, to the wastewater or something, but anyway, we are looking for a motion on that, please.
You'll make that motion.
Second. On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion is carried. RDF for comprehensive plan?
So obviously in the 23 budget also is the updated comp plan, that's been in our budget for many years and so it has not been updated again, 2011 must be the year we just did a lot of stuff, I don't know, or didn't do or whatever, but insignificant changes have and are taking place in the city, staff request that the RFP be sent out and proposals sought about updating this plan. Sheila and I are of the opinion that we guys got to get it out there and we got to see what the cost is, we know what our budget is, it's just going to be interesting to see what the firms come back with, you know, if we're even in the ballpark and if we are not, then we'll be back before you to kind of go through what we think internally we can do and what we think we need to hire somebody to do. So that's kind of where we're at, so I would like to, I'm seeking a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the distribution of the RFP.
Okay, can I have motion?
So move. Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion is carried. 2023 Seal Coat projects, I didn't know if Gary needed to talk about it at all, or...
I guess we're just doing our annual Seal Coat, the streets that we're doing are a lot of them that will be redone from 2019 to 2021, put Seal Coat on it, there's a couple of streets that are older that are in our, in our program, so basically we're going to write some specs and advertise and get approval from the companies. Well, $38 a spring house.
I would like to acknowledge Gary for all the work that he did on this, we were able to do it in-house and that saved us significantly on engineering costs, so.
That's our job, Gary. Thank you, Gary. Can you get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. And we're on to spring open house?
Yep, we've discussed having an open house in the spring, this would be an opportunity to invite the public in to meet with the various departments and ask questions about projects. It would be in this room, we would actually have displays set up for various departments, it would be all our departments and then citizens could just walk around and ask questions. It's a great way for people to meet our staff, a lot of times, you know, they don't necessarily know who our staff are or even some of our consultants and so it's just really a great way for the public to see what, what it is that we do, it's kind of that transparency and, you know, they'd be able to see those projects that Gary's talking about, Dave would be able to show them different things, the ambulance and the fire could be here doing some sort of fun demonstration of something, you know, we could talk about everything. So I think it would be a wonderful opportunity now, and this is where I think the discussion has to be had, is, you know, we could just leave it at that, it could just be a spring open house, it could be from 5 to 7, we just keep the room open, people have cookies or whatever, or you as a council, and again, this is up to you, you guys could have it be an open house, but then you can actually convene a meeting at the end and then people could ask questions of you. It's certainly up to you however you want to do it. I strongly recommend at the, at a minimum that we have the open house for people to be able to come in and work with our staff, they could sign up for, you know, they could learn a lot more about, you know, their utility bill and how they could sign up for their my bill or what we have for, you know, it's not an app, it's a, but it's, you know, you can go in and look at your bills, that type of thing. So I am recommending that it be on April 13th because we, it does not conflict with our Truth and Taxation Meeting the following week and is before the Public Works Departments get really busy in the field.
Okay, no, I don't see any problem, so it'd be Thursday on April 13th.
Yep, from 5 to 7.
2023 to 5 to 7, sounds good for me, see if fire and ambulance have the potential to be in here, police officers, just have everybody here, that'd be great, see if it works for everybody, but otherwise it's good for me.
And then I don't know, do you guys want to have to open it up or just keep it as an open house?
I mean, I think we should be here, I don't think we should go and board people with things, I think they'd rather hear, you know, what they want to see.
Right.
They're going to talk to the people they want to talk to.
Sure, absolutely.
If they want to watch us, they'd be watching us or they'd be here and there's not too many people that do that, so I think, yeah, leave it at that. So G would be a utility bill clerk, higher job description?
There's actually two things under this, so we would just need to post for the utility billing clerk position, the reason it's before you is because that actually their, their part of that position is funded through the general fund, so we'd ask that you please allow us to post for that with the first review of applications beginning March 3rd. So that's the first item that I would like to have the council give consideration to, please.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
On fair say aye? Pose, motion carried.
And then the second part of that is because we're going to have a little bit of a gap between when we bring somebody on board and when our bills have to go out and Tessa Boining has agreed to come back and consult with the city for a month or so to help us in that capacity, so I would request that we are able to hire Tessa Boining as a consultant with the city PUC to help with the March utility bills.
I'll make that motion. Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.
And then I guess there is a third one, there's a slight change to the revised utility billing clerk job description that I need a motion on. The one thing that was taken out of that job description is anything that was related to training. So they were the liaison for the safety committee. They, we took that out and put it with the HR, which is where it was traditionally in the past. So I just ask for council give consideration to changing that.
Can we just, yeah, make sure we updated that. Can we make a motion to approve?
Yep.
I can make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Then there's a half-day staff retreat?
Yep. So we had talked about doing a team-building, all-staff team-building retreat. It's very difficult to do that during the day when the offices are open. And so what we are looking to do is be able to close the city offices for half a day to be able to have that retreat facilitation. It would be team-building, image-building, respectful workplace. There'd just be, we'd run a gamut of different things for about four hours. And so I'm asking for that. The week that we do it, we're kind of focused on March thirtieth right now. The week that we would do it, we would also, just to keep, you know, the public as happy as well, we would propose that we would be open on the days that we don't have the retreat. We can open at seven AM, and we can stay open till five. So then that gives the people of the public a little bit more time. But then we'd physically close the doors and not have anybody answer phones or anything, and just all be probably in this room having our retreat.
Is that, were you thinking of having, like, hiring someone to participate?
We have bids out right now. We're, and that's the other part of it I probably should have put in here, but not to exceed, I would say not to exceed probably four thousand dollars total.
Okay, any questions?
We actually have a couple of people that we're looking at right now. They come highly recommended.
Are you any questions? Any motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Old Business, an executive, an executed escrow agreement and a check of thirty thousand dollars has been received from Granite City Real Estate LLC, doing business as GC Real Estate Partners. This agreement was reviewed and approved by Attorney Demick. The council will hold a public hearing in its March meeting for the Tiff District and tax abatement for this project. Any questions?
No. Everything that's got on.
Some.
They're just putting some money down.
Yeah, we got a check of thirty thousand. That's a good one.
If the project goes through, you get money to help increase some of the city's costs. If the project doesn't go through, you get money to help upgrade some of the city's costs.
Okay.
It's not a commitment to sign it.
Right.
The Tiff will help.
Just makes, makes them look like they're interested for sure.
Yeah, I mean, they're giving us thirty grand, so.
So we'll make that motion for that.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
Make that motion.
Second.
On fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. And that's, that's so we can have a public hearing in March. Alright, now we're on to new business, year-end review. It's nice to see that madam meeting, madam members are here, parks, where I see everybody here, see what we've been doing this past year.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As we have done in the past, this is a review of the twenty-twenty-two. I often say, and I think you guys have heard me say this before, when you're in government, everything goes sort of, it's, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. So many of these projects we've talked about over a period of a number of years. And so it's really nice and satisfying to see some of these really coming to fruition. So the first thing that I want to talk about is, oh, I'm sorry, I should probably have. Is that gonna work? Maybe. You might just have to click through it. Sorry. Can you plug in your monitor? Perfect. You're just gonna have to, okay. Well, this has to be in sync, I think. We'll figure it out. Anyway, so the first thing that we want to talk about is in November of twenty-one, we had, if you recall, we had a big housing summit, and we had drafted a strategic housing plan. As part of that strategic housing plan, we were going to be moving forward with some land purchases. So the first thing that we purchased was property. It's actually owned by the Melrose Area Development Authority. It's formerly the Tyler Property, or it was planted as Melrose Meadow View. We now are referring to it as Railroad West. It's eight, about approximately eighteen acres of mixed-use residential development, including a potential for a seventy-two-unit apartment building, which is what the escrow agreement you just approved. So that's Granite City. They would be going on the far west side of that, that particular development. So up in that corner, you would see that. And then eventually, we would have single-family and two different cul-de-sacs. So right now, we have a meeting coming up where we're going to be looking at the road and the costs of that particular project. The second one is the former craft site, which is next door here. That is going to become a mixed-use retail residential building with twenty-nine units and five thousand square feet of retail space. So that's very exciting as far as the housing goes. So then the next thing I just wanted to share with you is, again, we had a bond rating, and we have the highest rating that a community can have for our size. So that goes to say a lot about our financial situation and how well we do financially. So as far as the city goes, where we compare to the rest of the communities in the county, we do quite well, actually. We are right, we're kind of in the bottom third, if that makes sense. So we're doing really well from a tax, tax rate side of it. We've been able to keep our taxes down. The next thing I wanted to share with you is our capacity history. So when your net, net tax capacity goes up, it gives you the opportunity to keep your levy lower, because you just have that much more value in the homes that are there. So again, we have historically seen that increase, and it continues to be on trend. It'll be interesting next year when the housing market, you know, depending on what happens with the housing market, whether or not this trend will continue. We're hopeful it will, but please keep in mind that the builds for both the, of the apartment buildings are not going to get hit the tax roll till probably twenty-five. So, but we do have some big commercial projects that will probably show up next year on the tax capacity. Again, just kind of going through general fund. This is just a general fund and where, where our revenue sources come from. So forty-four percent is from property taxes, thirty-three percent is from local government aid. So when I talked about the need for us to keep that, that's a critical part of what our infrastructure, how we fund our infrastructure, many of the operations within the city. And so the LGA is really important to us. The other ones come from license and permits, charges for service fees. The electric franchise, we receive seventeen percent from the public utility side that comes into our general fund budget. And then we get about one percent from cable franchise fees. So on the flip side of that, then on the expense side, there is transfers that go out. Those transfers that go out are actually to pay for our capital projects. So that is where a majority of our capital projects are funded, is through those transfers out. Public safety is about twenty-seven percent. Streets is about nineteen percent. Community development's three. Parks and Rec is three. Legals about one. Admin and finance is about seventeen. And then legislative's about one. Then there's some miscellaneous categories in there as well. So that is how the, on the expenditure side, things happen. So one of the things that happened in twenty-two, quite a few changes in terms of employees. So we have hired Sheila Howerman as our city planner in twenty-two. Ryan Meyer, mayor, I'm never gonna get that right. Meyer, I'm saying it right. Sorry. There's too many mayors, Meyer, sorry. Has, has been hired as our finance director. We're very happy to have them both come on board. They've been a great asset for the city. Fran Hennecamp was hired under Gary's department. So Fran is a part-time person that helps out the street department in the summertime or as needed. Then it's Stephanie Robach and Austin Kowski. And I want to say, are these both ambulance people, or is one a fire person? Or one's a police reserve? They both are police? Austin, okay. So Stephanie must be ambulance? Oh, she's part-time police also. Okay, sorry. And then new council boards, Nick Shaw is now on our planning commission. Jolene Wheeling is our new, newly-elected city council member, and then Lindsay Chameleski is on our park board. There were two people that left our organization. Tessa Boining, who was our finance director, resigned. And then Bunker Hill, who was a longtime city council member, also is no longer here. He resigned his position because he moved out of state, so. The other, the next thing that we're going to talk about is under liquor licenses, tobacco rental license. Patty takes care of all of that. She keeps that stuff running very well for us. And she, the licenses, I don't think they've changed much year to year. So we have one wine license, five on sale, Sunday on sale is six, a club license of one, off sale is two, three-point-two off sale is two. Tobacco, there's seven tobacco license holders in the community. And right now, there are ten multifamily dwellings and thirty-one single-family dwellings that maintain rental licenses. The, in twenty-twenty-two, the city received thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents from donations. I think that says a lot about our community and their generosity towards our fire department, parks, many other type, many other areas in our community. If you can look at the building permits, this one's really very interesting. Obviously, we saw a huge increase in twenty-two. The majority of those were because of roofs. Hailstorm, yes. So we saw that number is a little bit of an anomaly, because it really is all hailstorm-related. So we saw a huge number of increase in our, in our roofs. So that's what brought that number way up. Interestingly enough, though, the value side of it, if you, if you look at that, which I believe is the next screen, our value continues to be extremely significant. So on the residential side, you know, it was higher, but our commercial industrial side in twenty-two was quite significant. There were two pretty large projects, Land O' Lakes, what was the other big one? It was primarily Land O' Lakes. Harlan, yep, the storage shed. So there were a number of projects that actually brought that value up, so. Very, very good for the building department. On the electric side, we, again, you know, had a very good year. We have these APPA reliability reports, and every year, we just get outstanding on those. For a percentage, the reliability for our residents is ninety-nine point nine-nine percent. So very, very good reliability on the part of our utility side. There was fourteen total outages in twenty-two. Ten of those were scheduled. There were only three unscheduled outages, and then there were three scheduled customer plan maintenance outages. So Roger and his crew do a really good job of not only informing everyone when this happens, but they take great pride in making sure that we don't stay on very long at all. In fact, I think the actual average interruption was less than, what was it? It's less than half a day. I don't even think it was that. And. Eighty-nine minutes, so. Yeah, so way less than half a day, so. Like less than two hours, so that's awesome. The other thing that happened on the electric side is time of use rates. So time of use rates, we've had in place now for a couple of years. Right now, it's just voluntary. So they were approved as a voluntary rate structure through December of twenty-three. We are starting the discussions right now, as far as where we want to head in twenty-four with time of use. The other miscellaneous projects, very significant, were the main street poles and light fixtures were changed out to LEDs. Obviously, there are brand-new lights that were put on the bridge, Fifth Avenue, new Christmas lights on Main Street. And then there was a new service line on a rural line, along with a line extension. By the numbers, there was fifty-four thousand feet of two-inch inner duct and conduit installed. There was twenty-seven thousand feet of one-point-five KV cable installed. There was eighty-five hundred feet of six-hundred B secondary cable installed. There was switches installed. There was one replacement in eight new locations. There were, there was one three-phase transformer installed, and there were eleven single-phase. Called to order at power plant, we were called to order to maintain, we had to generate at the power plant one time to help maintain the grid reliability, which is the MISO. That, I believe, was on December twenty-third, right? And then six times, we were put on call for, again, for grid reliability. Not running, but we had to be ready. So that's kind of where we are at with the electric department. The water wastewater department, again, you know, this, this goes to volume in what we do. In the water wastewater department, there was a total of six-hundred-and-eight million one-hundred-and-seventy-nine gallons that were pumped out of five wells. We hauled one, one million nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred gallons of bio solids, which is three-hundred-and-one dry metric tons, about four hundred loads that went out into the fields. We typically jet the sewers one-third every year, and there's also hydrant flushing. The other thing that's not on here is they typically camera the sewers as well. They take different areas of the city and do that. One of the things they did as part of our staff retreat for budget, budgeting, they did the camera part of the areas that are going to get improved over on fourth, and I believe there is some sewer work that has to be done as part of that because of what they found in the cameras. There is, one of the things that was very significant for the wastewater department this year is they were able to save forty-four thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars as a savings, because they were able to re-figure out their polymer and do it differently, so that the feed system was built, so that we were able to minimize, or not minimize, there's a lot of chemicals up there, but really minimize the polymer that's used. So that's, that's going to be a nice savings over the years. Obviously, the big project out at the wastewater plant is the wastewater plant itself upgrades. That project has been going on for two years. By the time we get done, it'll be almost two and a half years. So the plant construction, instruction includes a dome installation, a new clarifier, a new headworks building with screw pumps, new screening system with auto washers, a new compactor, a new splitter structure, bypass pumping, a new DAF for sledge thickening. So pretty, very complex project. We're not done yet. We're really hoping we're going to be able to have an open house this summer and say that it's completely done, and we're going to start giving tours to the public. Just so you're aware, on February twenty-seventh, they are actually going to do the first bypass to the new clarifier. So that's going to take place yet this month. The other thing, and Roger didn't have it on his report, but he does just as many, if probably not more than the wastewater side. In addition to, and then our admin team does an extreme amount of these as well. There's always reporting that has to go in, whether it's the state, the federal, there's all, all different places they have to report to. So this is just kind of a listing of all the different reports that are required just by wastewater alone. There's also an inspection the MPCA did this year. They did a plant inspection. And MDH, Minnesota Department of Health, came and did a water system and facilities inspection. This was, we passed all of these inspections with no deducts on anything. Testing, there are all daily tests for nutrients. There is a whole effluent toxicity test, prior, priority pollutants, yearly proficiency, and nitrate testing. and nitrate testing. The nitrate testing is something new that we have to do because of our M P D E S permit. The other thing that's new that we're not paying for but is being done is M P C A is coming in and doing testing for PFABs, which is a polyfluoro-carbon forever chemicals. They're the plastics that are pretty much in everything. On the street department side, the big project this year obviously was County Road Thirteen and the Fifth Avenue Bridge. Again, another project that was almost, not quite a year, but it was a pretty long project. We bid it in November of twenty twenty, I think, yep. And that was opened up just in twenty-two. So we bid it in November of twenty-one, able to open it up. Our, December of twenty-one, opened it in November twenty-two, so. Great project, obviously. There was a big restoration done to the dam along with, along with the bridge itself and the rerouting of the river as well. The other thing that was done in, at that same time period is the Sack River Park. There was a road put in along with campsites. We are currently working, as we said, on the bathroom part of that. There also, our street department installed the water lines. There was flood damage done to Knight Street North over the, over this last year. And again, credit to our folks, both Gary and Sheila had been working with FEMA to try and get some funding for this. And just, it wasn't really a viable option, but we definitely explored it. And so now we do have a bid that we're gonna share between, cost share between the P, the electric department and the street department, along with hopefully the smaller utilities to be able to get that fixed so that we aren't gonna have an issue this year. Cause some erosion behind some folks' houses. There was a new hot box that was purchased for the street department as well. And then we contract with M M U A to do safety training every year. M M U A stands for the, I don't even know what it stands for, Municipal, Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. So they have, we contracted them every year to do safety training. And so you can see the listing and the variety of different things that they do. Primarily, the safety training is for our utilities departments. However, there are times during the year that it, they end up being all-staff meetings as well. So we are getting trained on different safety protocols. The police department upgraded their tasers. They did order a replacement squad, twenty twenty-three Ford hybrid SUV, and that is expected to be delivered next month. Twenty-two calls were down by two hundred and fifty compared to twenty-one. I, you know, I think that's a good thing, so. Anyway, that's kind of just the year in review. Looking ahead, we have lots of really good, good busy projects on the horizon once again in twenty-three, so. We are continuing to grow and happy to be here. I do want to acknowledge that the staff, the staff of the city and the, and all the staff, everyone works very, very hard and it's very appreciated, everything they do. Just as an example, Gary's guys today were in here fixing the sinks in the bathrooms and, you know, we just, we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have. And I'm just very, very grateful to actually be the administrator that gets to lead such a dynamic team, so. And I appreciate the council, councils and the mayor's support as well of us as we've tried to get these things done. So with that, I'm gonna open it up to anyone who has any questions. Otherwise, that's it for me.
All right. Is there any questions? It is a lot of hard work with everybody here in the office, but wastewater, water, electrical, in between the fire, ambulance, police, there's a lot of moving wheels in this community that people don't realize and don't see every day. So it's definitely an eye-opener when you become a council member, just to see what's really involved in running our community, so. All right, we're on to informational items. Schools and conferences, public utilities commission meetings, then there's a bill HF one three seven seven to increase LGA. If there's anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aight.